All right. Good evening, everyone. We are going to go ahead and start with Committee of the Whole. Today is October 6, 2020. Public notice is hereby, given that this meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-207, version 4, due to the infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair, myself, has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location because the physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The public may view the meeting via live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or via Facebook on our Murray City, Utah page. Okay, now we will be opening it up for citizen comments and let's see. They will follow as live through the Zoom meeting process. Those wishing to speak during these portions of the meeting must send a request to city.council@murray.utah.gov. Again, city.council@murray.utah.gov. You must submit a request by 3:00 PM on the Murray... Sorry, meeting dates. You will receive a confirmation email with instructions and a Zoom link to join the meeting. So if you weren't able to join us for this meeting, please note that you will be able to next week. Or sorry, on the 20th. Read, also, we will read into the record your comment by sending an email in advance or during the meeting to city.council@murray.utah.gov. The email is also down below. Comments are limited to less than three minutes, include your name and contact information as well. Again, welcome everybody to Committee of the Whole. It's so good to see everyone. I've been out, but it's great to be back in the swing of things. We are going to go ahead and start with approval of minutes. Does anybody have a motion to approve them? Everybody, Brett.
I will do that. I will move that we approve, I'll take them both, right?
Yeah, sure. I'll take them both.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes from Committee of the Whole, August 25, 2020, and also the Committee of the Whole, September 1, 2020.
Perfect. All right, perfect. And Jennifer?
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hales.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez.
Aye.
All right, perfect. Now that the meeting minutes have passed, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number one. Amendment to the CARES Act Funding Agreement and Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendment. Brenda Moore will be presenting. Brenda?
Good evening. So the county has passed another $1.4 million down in CARES Act funding. So what will become for you tonight in the council meeting is both a resolution to amend their original agreement of 1.4 to the new amount, adding another 1.4. So we will now have CARES funding of $2,913,244.86. Why they didn't round that, I won't know. So it, the agreement also gives us, the original agreement said we had to have the funds earmarked and committed or spent by October 1st. They now gave us till November 1st to have them either committed, a plan for what we're going to do with them, or spent by November 1st. I think they have until December 31st to spend their entire allotment that they have now passed down. And then after that, the federal government wants their money back if we have not spent it. We will do our best and we have plans for all of the $2.9 million or ways that we can spend it if it comes to the very end and we're missing a few dollars. So there was, will be both the ordinance to do a public hearing in the council meeting and then adoption of the budget amendment so that we can accept the money and can spend it. We are increasing the budget again. And I've left the same authorization in here. I'm going to originally put it in the general fund. And then if other funds like the library, power, stormwater and stuff do things that would warrant CARES funding, we will move it to their, I have the authority to move it to their budgets. Other than that, there's the resolution that says that we can, the mayor can sign this agreement and we can accept the money. So do you have any questions about the CARES funding? What's before you tonight? No questions?
No, I think we're good. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
All right. Right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number two. Judges to serve as temporary justice courts. GL will be presenting. Go ahead.
Every so often when the judge cannot attend court, whether he's ill or out of town, we have a fill-in judge come. We need to follow a formal process to create a list from which a fill-in judge can be chosen. This probably happens on average about once every other month, so it's not often. That's typically when, well, when there's not COVID-19 going on, that's about how often it is. So the process is to, what we've gone through is the mayor has submitted five names of justice court judges who are sitting in relatively smaller areas and have the time to arrange their schedule so that they could fill in. And that was given to the mayor and he's now passing it on to the council for ratification. One of the things to keep in mind is it's not easy to get a fill-in and they can't just take off a day to help our judge out.
You kind of cut it there for a minute.
Okay.
Can you just repeat what, I think you were talking about the judges and the list of the judges?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
The list comes from Judge Thompson, who's familiar with these judges. And he has sent it on to the mayor, who now sends it to you for ratification. And I was explaining that, I would like to explain that it's not easy to get fill-in judges. A lot of judges are full-time and can't break away from their courts to come to fill in our court. If you look at the ones that are on the list, the five names and their biographies that are in the packet, you'll see that they're relatively smaller justice courts, not like Salt Lake or Ogden. So we're limited both geographically. It would not be efficient or effective to have somebody come up from St. George, for example, or come down from Logan. So we've tried to keep it in Utah County, a little bit in Salt Lake County, I think over in Summit County. But basically, this is required. And what happens in the process is, once we get a list, we send that list to the senior justice court judge, who is Judge McCullough out in West Valley. And when a need comes up, he will choose one from that list. And so that'll come back to you later tonight as a request to pass a resolution ratifying this list of judges. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Anybody have any questions? Diane?
Yes. GL, as you and I have already discussed, I have concerns about about the proposed pool of judges. It just doesn't seem as if they reflect the complexion or gender of our city. And I was wondering if there was any way we could expand that pool if there were other options. And you said that the list will remain open and that you're, now that you're aware of that and that the judge is aware of that, that you'll keep that into consideration. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, when you and I spoke yesterday, I contacted the judge and relayed that. And he explained to me that those others who were maybe representative of other groups in the city were not available. Specifically, he's several female judges who are full-time in their respective jurisdictions. When we did have, did have a discussion, there was another judge that he thought of who was a woman. And he called her and unfortunately, she's on inactive status now and so she's not hearing any cases. But that will be, we'll keep that in mind and if something comes available, somebody is able to help out, we're more than happy to bring that back and add that to the list. The number of five is not necessarily, there's nothing magic to it. It's just a number. So we have enough to choose from, hoping that one of them will be available when the time comes. But we can add to that list in the future if we need to.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Kat? I just had one question and I just thank you, Councilwoman Turner, for reaching out to GL about that. Of course, the greater diversity in any pool of candidates, you know, the better. But obviously, geographic and availability are, you know, always going to have an impact. My question is, is there a difference in the, so I'm trying to figure out how to say it, but so a wider geographic area of finding judges due to using technology more, is that something that's opening up? Or is it still fully an in-person substitute situation?
So that, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I suspect that we would prefer in-person. There have been a lot of substitutions lately. The substitutions that I talked about earlier, once every couple of months, is when it's a normal schedule and everything is in-person. That's typically what we found. Whether that can be done now, a lot of court right now, in fact, all of court right now really is done over WebEx. And so there is that, I suppose going forward, that may be a possibility. But for right now, I think we're looking more at a judge who comes to the courtroom to hold court.
Thank you for that information. Yes. And it's nice just knowing that the list is an open sort of living list that can be added to. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you to both of you. I had the same question on what Diana said. And then I also wanted to know about Zoom-type situations. I had the same thing. So thanks for your questions and the answers.
All right, anybody else? No? All right, well, thank you, GL. We look forward to be able to put you on as a judge one day. All right. Our next item on the agenda is services available to Murray City residents. Dale Cox.
Okay, I want to just take a couple of seconds to set this up. I've done a lot of thinking since we had our meeting on diversity and inclusion the other day with the cat brought forward. And first of all, I thought that was an excellent presentation. I am all for diversity and inclusion in Murray City, but I don't exactly know how the mechanics work, I guess. And the more I think about it, the more questions I have. I've always, I've lived here for 30-plus years and Murray has always been a very friendly, inclusive town. Not, not to say that we don't have our Archie bunkers and those type of people, but I've reached out to several people. Several people called me since that presentation and they feel that Murray, Murray is a good place to live and we're very inclusive. Diversity is a completely different thing. I think diversity is taught in homes, in churches, in schools. I don't know how a committee of nine people are going to do anything for Murray, especially if they're from, some of them will be from the outside of Murray. But I don't know how, what this committee will do. We're going to do a survey. We're going to hire somebody to put the questions together. We're going to do a survey. It'll go out to all of Murray residents. It'll be tax dollars spent. And I don't know exactly what we're looking for and what the, what the end goal is. Like I said, I've talked to several people. I've talked to minorities. I've talked to same-sex couples. Some have lived here. I've talked to people in Murray that have lived here their whole lives. And they've raised their families here because of the feeling of Murray City that Murray City has. And I got the same answer from all of them, that they feel good. I mean, some of them are 40, 50-year people. Some of them are five-year people. They moved here because of inclusiveness. And I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that we're way ahead of, and I've said this 100 times. I'm so proud of Murray, our city, our police. We're doing diversity training long before it was popular. Our school board does an excellent job of helping all types of, whether they're, I don't know what the proper term is, privileged or underprivileged. Murray City programs that I decided to do a little research and see what we do do. And this is prior to any of this coming up. This is prior to any of the disturbances that we've had and the, everything that's been going on in the country. This is what Murray does every day. Through, through our different divisions and through, you know, several mayors have put this together. But our parks and recreation have scholarships for recreation programs, income-based. Senior recreation centers, opportunities for subsidized or partially subsidized meals and program participation. Cultural arts provides funding for various programs in Murray School Districts, such as music specialists, after-school musicals, storytelling, Honda Tales, the spring art show and middle and for middle and high school students. The Murray Library, home book services. Materials are mailed to homebound patrons with postage-paid envelopes included to return them. Rosetta Stone, free resources to learn languages for library cardholders. Discover programming for special-needs adults. A bi-monthly gathering to make crafts. Home School Club for kids that are home-schooled and come to the library once a month for educational activities, Spanish collections, both adult and children. Resource on, resources on the website, online library and database with specific information on U.S. Citizenship Test Prep, GED, Spanish and English. You know, probably need Rosalba's help on this one. Online resources, nine-four, and I can get the academia part. What's the other one? I know I'll kill it, Rosalba. Well, whatever she says.
Out of Medica. There you go.
There you go. A database for Spanish, Portuguese, Portuguese scholarly journals, limited access cards for homeless population to allow material checkout and computer use without a permanent address. I'll reach to Daycares in Murray for providing storytimes year-round on a weekly basis. And nobody knows what that is, but it's a Russian club for storytime. And that was discontinued for lack of interest and attendance. Spanish storytime, this was offered in the past, but this continued for lack of interest and attendance. Our human resources is beyond, above and beyond any obscene hiring and employment practice that are fully compliant with federal law prohibiting discrimination. Our fire department helps low-income families with free smoke detectors. Cadet programs often help kids with family issues, sub for Santa collections to assist low-income families with gifts every year. Operation Cover Up collects coats and blankets for those who need them during the winter. Ambulance bills can be adjusted in case of financial hardships. The police department continues to sponsor the DARE program in the elementary schools of Murray. Finance and administration ensures contribution to the HEAT program that are budgeted each year and manages the Murray Utility Relief Fund in conjunction with the HEAT eligibility. Community and economic development offers down payment assistance through Neighbor Works along with other housing programs for low and moderate income families. In addition, the city's website can now be translated in over 100 different languages by using the translation button on the bottom of your right-hand corner. The tower, power department and the mayor both offer scholarships for graduating seniors this year, which usually equates to six students receiving money for college. And we contribute a sizable amount to the boys' girls' club each year. I don't know what a committee is going to do. I don't understand, I guess, what a committee of nine people will do once, and where's the money going to come from? What budget are we going to get the money from for the survey? We had a bare-bones budget this year. We cut 4% off of everyone's budget. Who's going to pay for this? And, and I'm not against it if it has an end goal and it will improve what we already do. But if there's a need, let's talk about that need and see what we can do to, to move Murray forward. I just don't, I guess I don't understand what a nine-person committee will do to help Murray that is already one, in my opinion, one of the most progressive cities in the state. And with that, I will, that's the end of my presentation.
Anyone have comments? Cat or Diane?
Cat.
So I'll go first. I'm assuming your questions aren't rhetorical, that you're looking for a response. And, and thank you for reading out that list of the incredible resources and programs that Murray has because it really, those are the pieces that make Murray amazing and that make us all really grateful to live here. And what I love thinking about as you read that list, as I reflect on the services my family's used at the services that are available, at things that have tried and things that have failed, things that have been successful for generations, is that every one of those was a proposal. Every one of those was an idea someone had of how they thought they could help their community. And, and I find that really exciting. And I think that they serve, some of them serve huge, broad pieces of the community and some of them serve very small pieces of the community. But all of them are equally valid and important. And I think, and I think your point of what is this, this committee going to serve and exactly what need is it going to fill is a really, really valid question. And I feel like that means that I haven't answered it clearly and given explanations. And I think that's because I was really wanting to take the lead of members of the different communities I've spoken to and sort of following their lead. And, and I think your point about the budget is really valid. And I think it's something we're going to have to look at after we have some, what are they called? The proposals or the quotes, the bids, when we have those. But yeah, I think, I think we need to have more conversations about the clarity of specific goals, absolutely. But I feel very strongly and passionately that the need is there and that there are still proposals and ideas and, you know, barriers that can be taken down that haven't been identified yet and ways of easing access to things and bringing people in in a really welcoming way that hasn't happened yet. And we don't even, it's hard to see what hasn't happened yet. And so I think we're lucky to live in a city that's already amazing and has already had so many ideas that have blossomed into incredible experiences for our residents and that there's still a lot of potential there for growth and for more. So I hope we can continue the conversation about it.
Okay, is it my turn? One of the concerns I have is, what I want to make sure is that all of our community is represented. Our boards and commissions, I have concerns that there is not the ethnic diversity that really represents our community. And I think that's so important. I think that's one of the things this, this committee could help us with. I think there are many things, but I would, I would like to find out, and I've expressed this to Jan, I'd like to find out what the ethnic makeup is of our boards and commissions. Because I, you know...
Gender, gender I think should be included in that, Diane.
What's that?
Gender should be included in that.
Yes, oh, of course. I know that's, I mean, that's part of diversity. I agree, just like with judges. I mean, you know, that's my concern that I just want to make sure we are representing our community because we are a city. We have a very diverse city. And I just want to make sure that we reflect that in, like I said, our boards of commissions and everything we do. So I think that would be helpful. I don't understand the need for a questionnaire or, you know, I'm not real, I don't really understand that piece of it. But I think there is a need for that, for that committee or commission or, you know, I wasn't here for the conversation, which I'm sorry, but, you know, family took priority. But anyway, so, but I think it's important. And I think that in order to make sure we're meeting, and I'll repeat myself, make sure we're meeting all of our city's citizens' needs. And, you know, like I said, I think we have a very diverse population. I don't think it's reflected in our boards and commissions and in a lot of the areas of the city. And that's my concern, so.
Brett?
Yeah, you're so good, Rosalba, how you can pick up on. My question is, Dale, you caught me off-guard when you said outside of Murray. For some reason, I was thinking we were keeping this inside of Murray.
Well, if I understand it correctly, out of the nine, some can be from outside of Murray, but they, they may provide services in Murray. Is that correct?
The purpose of that was so that people would either own businesses or be residents in Murray. And I did want to leave an allowance for if we had someone needing like a translator or if we couldn't get an actual member of the refugee community to attend due to issues with transportation or language, just depending, that someone who works with that population could, could represent that group's voice. But the intent is for it to all be Murray.
That's, that was, I was just going to agree. That was, sorry Diane. That was my understanding that, of course, like Kat said, that if, if it couldn't, then we would have someone, but we would first go to Murray, right? Is it, yeah, that was my understanding too. And that's what I totally agree with, that it would stay in Murray, so.
Right, and they would be able to bring in resources, not actual members of, right?
Yes. Or it would be somebody who provides resources within Murray, right? Am I correct, Kat, by saying that? So if there's a group that works with refugees in, here in Murray, and we don't have...
Right. But it would be, yes, as, as Councilmember Hale said, it would obviously be first asking members of that community, whether it's a business owner or a resident. And then only if there could be no one that could make it because of those barriers or challenges. And even then, if it was someone who works with the refugee community, it would have to be someone who works with them here in Murray, not just at large.
So, and I appreciate Dale bringing this forward. I was under the impression that it was solely just going to be a conversation about the services we serve and not the diversity board, so I apologize, Kat, for that. I know that it has been a conversation and Kat has been working from our last meeting. Kat has been working with the mayor about this. I do appreciate that there are many services. And there's a lot of services that we are unaware of, right? That are offered to our community from outside community resources as well that we probably overlooked. And this is just a list of what Murray does specifically too. And there's some partnerships that are there as well and that we also receive from the county. So the conversation about the diversity board will continue to happen. And right now, I think... I don't know, since we are talking about it, Kat, do you just want to explain where you're at with that and where we go from here?
Uh, sure. Absolutely. Uh, the mayor and I had a great conversation, um, I think a week ago. Time has lost meaning. I think it was a week ago, um, uh, where we spoke about, um, really just the need for clarity, um, of really nailing down, you know, some direct goals and the idea of starting with the survey before the, um, before the committee was created rather than within the committee. And so the mayor's office is looking into, uh, sort of costs for that, that he'll bring to the, the council. Um, and, and we'll move forward from there. Uh, but it's just something we're still working on. Um, Mayor, did you want to add anything? Did I miss anything?
Uh, I don't think you missed anything. Uh, I think that's, uh, that's what we've discussed. Our, and my office is working, uh, right now, looking at a couple of vendors, uh, to get some costs and working with, uh, with Brooke and purchasing to, uh, look what it, uh, what it would take to, uh, to make this happen, at which time we will come back to, come back to the council, look for funding. And to, and then to develop the questions.
Rosalba, I have a question.
Go ahead, Diane.
Um, so what is that supposed to tell us? Is that supposed to tell us whether we are going to go forward with the, with the committee or, uh, if we need it? I'm, I'm kind of confused as to why we need to do a survey.
All right, Kat.
Um, so I had used sort of the word survey initially of something that the committee would do, um, with the different sort of ambassadors from different, um, communities within the city and doing sort of a deep dive of what their issues are for access, safety, things like that, so that we can get a better idea of what those individual, um, communities are saying. Um, the mayor felt more comfortable with doing the survey first and, and doing it, um, sort of in this, uh, like getting more technical, professional when done. Um, other than the cost, um, I'm not opposed. I think it's important the mayor's office feels, feels comfortable, um, and sees, sees the direction. And, and forgive me if I, if I misstate, please step in, uh, Mayor, if I do. Um, but I, I, for me, the real important thing is that it comes from those communities directly. Um, which is why I felt really comfortable going with those members of a committee and sort of the networking out from there um, to dive into the needs, um, without a, uh, a survey with a cost. But I think we're, we're going to get bids and see what those look like. And then we can have a discussion from there. Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm still confused. Is it, is it, so we can determine if we are going to, if we need it or what issues we need to, to broach with it? I mean, is the real function of the survey?
Go ahead, Kat.
For me, it's, it's what are the specific needs so that we can see what the largest um, ask is for in the community, what the largest need is, what the largest percentage, um, of interest, of concern, of challenge, uh, that pops up from it. Um, that's, that's my perspective on it because with my initial intent, the survey was to reach out to the individual communities from their representative on the committee and sort of dig down into what, um, what their needs are, what their challenges are, where they're having trouble accessing. Um, some of our amazing services that are already out there. Do they know they're there? Do they know how to reach them? How could we make them more accessible? So that was my intent. Um, and right now, I'm just trying to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with the process and is on board because this will be more successful with the larger support, um, on both the council and the mayor's office side. Um, so trying to be, uh, conscientious of that and, and thoughtful in getting sort of specific needs ahead of time if that's, um, what we need to move forward.
Okay.
All right. Diane, finish this off.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to, to be clear, I'm not against this. I just, I am thoroughly, I'm, I'm proud of what Murray does. We can always improve. It's just, uh, the mechanics of it that, uh, I, I'm having trouble with trying to figure out, do we, do we need a survey? Or can we put a commission together and have them go out and find out what the needs? Or do we do a survey and see what rises to the top? And as a council and a mayor's office, fix that. I, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways to do it. And I, I guess we'll, we'll work through those. We'll see how it works, uh, where we end up. Uh, in a year from now, I guess, one way or another, it's a step in, it's a good step in a good direction. But that, like I say, the mechanics are, it's all in the details. And it seems to be some confusion on that, but we'll figure it out.
I, you know, I really want to say, I think since Kat has kind of driven this conversation, we need to allow her to continue to lead on it. And when, and when she's ready to come back and, and really present it with all the facts and all the details and, and really, there's a, it, for me, there's, there needs to be a buy-in with the mayor and that conversation and that comfortability level needs to come also there. Um, so Kat, when you're ready to come back and present, I would be more than happy to give you that opportunity as well.
Thank you and for the conversation about it. And, and just to reiterate, um, wanting to improve or adapt or change, um, something about a city or its services doesn't mean you're not super proud of where we are already or appreciative of those who are already working really hard on those services. Um, because of course, um, I think we're all really proud of, of where we are, um, and just looking forward.
Well, thank you. Um, all right. Do we have any announcements, Jen? We're going to go ahead and move on to announcements, if you have any.
Yes. I have a couple of things I wanted to mention. Um, I think you're all aware that we have set, uh, the next Murray City School Coordinating Council Meeting for next Wednesday, October 14th at 5:00 P.M. It will be a Zoom meeting and we'll be getting the agenda from the school board this time. Um, and second, I wanted to mention the Utah Land Use Institute. Um, usually this time of year, they do a, a, um, two-day in-person land use conference. And this year they have set this up to be a virtual training event that will begin on Wednesday, October 21st. And it will go every Wednesday for 10 weeks. Uh, it is at 10:00 A.M. each time. I'm not sure how long those sessions will last. Um, but you do need to pre-register and it is free of cost. So if there's anyone who is interested, it's always excellent. Um, Diane's attended several times. I think, uh, other council members have as well. And, um, they always have good topics. So just let me know at another time if you're interested and we'll get you registered. That's all.
Well, thank you. With that, we will adjourn and come back in five minutes. Do you guys, is that enough time? Sorry. Kind of went over a little bit. All right. We'll see you back in five minutes for council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.